I'd like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, October 5th, Spencer Port of Education Meeting. Please join me with the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America and to the required which stands one nation under God, neither is law or liberty, just as far.
So the motion to approve the agenda.
Like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded. All in favor? So. As with every board meeting, we start with privilege of the floor. I don't have my documents that I typically read. Basically, privilege of the floor is opportunity for community members to share their comments. We will listen intently. We will take into consideration everything that's said, but we will not respond immediately after the speaker. So our first speaker for privilege of the floor is our very own Pat. I always mess up your name. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Victor Ready. Come on up, Pat, and join us at the podium here. Officially, we've got to state your name.
Officially, huh? Okay. I'm Pat Vicaretti. Hopefully you can hear me. Uh, I'm Pat Vicaretti. I work at Cosgrove Middle School. I live in the district for over 21 years and I live at five South Main Drive, Spencerport, New York, 1455.
Thank you.
So, good evening, members of the board, super gentlemen, swan, ladies and gentlemen. I've been advised by some people that I really shouldn't waste my time. The board either doesn't care to listen or they don't have a heart. Well, by me being here, I chose to believe otherwise. I've been with the district for more than 21 years and I've gotten to know many of you. The morale among my fellow parent professionals is extremely low. And it's due to the low non-living wage. Rochester City School District has been dealing with a deficit of millions of dollars. And yet they're more than able to pay their parents $15 an hour. New York State just increased minimum wage by 70 cents. And we have only been receiving 40 cents for as long as I can remember. And with our health insurance increasing almost every year 10%, what little things we make are gone by February. If each and every one of you did our jobs, each and every one of you did our jobs for two weeks in the classroom, in the lunchroom, on the bus, you would all say, wow, you're so sad. And then start giving us a living wage, not a minimum wage, a minimum wage and getting by wage, a living wage, we can support ourselves. Last year when we were working four days a week, it seemed like we had more duties. And all, and all we did, and we all did what we needed to do without complaining. And with the same amount of pay, more duties, the same thing. This year, I've been, I've been seeing you reach out to people to have them apply to various positions, aides, school aides, bus monitors, substitutes, et cetera. Maybe the reason that there's no success is because people would rather work, would rather work at, for example, Subway for $17 an hour than our district that pays $12.50 an hour. New York State increase will not go into effect until December 31st, 2021. Wouldn't it be wonderful if our district did not wait and increase our wage to a living wage? When I was growing up, my father told me that whatever I do, I do over 100%. And make sure at that time I look myself in the mirror and say, did I do the best I could today? Can each one of you truly say that? Can you truly, in respect to your employees, do you treat us with respect? Do you go out of your way to show your appreciation with respect to our pay? We're not asking for much, but many of us would be in real trouble if anything happened to one of our spouses. Minimum wage is just that, minimum. Please, please consider going just a little further. Spencerport will truly be Rochester's top.
Thank you. Our next privilege of the floor, oh, we have no more. Oh, yes, we do. Mr. Michael Maselli. Please confirm that you're actually a member of our community.
There's Michael Maselli, 41 Long Grove Circle in Spencerport, New York. So would you please give me a non-verbal warning when I get close? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, our board members in Canada, my name is Michael Maselli. Something that's very dear to me in the talk. What is the board position that schools have supporting innovation in the field of technology? Take a minute and throw that. Well, we do everything. Truth is, I'm actually just kidding around. October 18th through October 22nd is Board of Education Appreciation Week. A little early on the calendar, so we're going to change it up a little bit. Whereas, I proclaim October 5th, 2021, as Board of Education Appreciation Week, pregame edition. Whereas, this is Buffalo Dell's country. Rest assured, no tables will be part of it. Whereas, the education of our children is the foundation upon which economic, social, and intellectual capital of our community. Whereas, the education of our children is critical to our community's continued prosperity and shall open doors for all students. We can achieve excellence through effort. Whereas, we all acknowledge that Board of Education members are lifelong learners. Whereas, serving in the Board of Education will be exposed to new terminology. For example, vitinoids, processes, irregardless, and gals. Whereas, serving in the Board of Education, you will learn that internal and external audits are not medical procedures, but sometimes they feel it. Whereas, serving in the Board of Education, you are legally obligated to approve the use of a service point in school should the student request. Whereas, serving in the Board of Education, you may be referred to as a World War II era governmental agency by the community. Whereas, decisions made by the Board of Education directly influence instruction throughout our schools. These decisions set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in a local, national, and global 21st century community. Whereas, the most important construct that Board of Education should consider in making critical decisions about our schools is that cheese balls are bad. Whereas, the Board of Education has demonstrated strong commitment to quality of public education by securing adequate resources, promoting academic standards, and fostering partnerships within the community. Now, therefore, I, Michael Maselli, to hereby recognize contributions of the Board of Education to the academic success of our student community, express my sincerest recognition to the board for their focus on the well-being and achievement of children throughout Spencerport schools. This stated October 5th, 2021. Thank you. The board, who is in the board, they know me, probably want any feedback, but if there is one piece of feedback I would like, it's a no. And the last thing, I guess, this is for Miss Stone.
Good luck before his time was up. So should I apologize to the audience for that? So Mr. Maselli is a dear friend of the board after serving six years on the Board of Education. We appreciate that and we appreciate him thinking of us for the Board Appreciation Week or Day, according to him. Thank you all. Okay, our next item on our agenda is consent agenda. And I want to point out that there were, there was an update to one or two of the documents that were put on that, that Susan notes earlier, an email to everyone, just a clarification of the documents. So were there any questions about those updates? Or just clarifications, any form of memos? So with that, do I have a motion? Okay, second, second grade, all in favor? Six oh, thank you, everyone. Okay, Board of Education reports, I want to share that it was at the external audit meeting and exciting stuff happens there. Won't give you any spoiler alerts while we talk to you about that in just a little while. But what I do want to share about that process, it's really impressive that we have community members that are willing to give up their time and be on that committee. And luckily, I think it's mostly accounting people, so they enjoy those numbers where us mere mortals are confused as heck with what's going on there. But I do appreciate all the time and effort that that's put into that committee. The other one quick thing I want to share is on behalf of the board, our our prayers to Mr. Bracken and his father. He, you may have noticed, he hasn't been at the last couple of meetings. He's trying to spend as much time as possible as his dad is in hospice. So our prayers go out to Mr. Bracken. Mr. Canade, any reports?
The only thing, just a comment, just a quick shout out to the students and staff of the Homecoming Planning Committee. It was amazing to see our Spencerport community come together to support this incredible event of homecoming last week. It was, the turnout was amazing. The kids were great. It was great to see families and just a whole community coming together in a positive way. So a big shout out to the Homecoming Planning Committee, students and staff that were involved in that. It was a great event. That's it for me.
Hi, Kate, Helen, Greg. I have no update.
So how was your first grade?
My first grade was, well, how do you know it was my first? But this was my first grade, it's my sport, and it was fun. We loved being behind the drum line. I'm actually hoping that next year they could teach us a tiny little intro, so we could participate.
Thank you.
I don't have an official report, but it was also my first grade because we couldn't do one last year. And I thought it was great. I love homecoming. And again, thank you to everybody who's involved in that.
I wasn't here, but I got lots of great pictures and it was awesome. I also want to give a shout out to all the schools because both of my students have been coming home with lots of activities that they would like to sign up for. And I know that the schools are doing their best to get the kids back to a sense of structure and normalcy. And it does not go unnoticed. A lot of work.
Yeah.
That's the report. I concur about homecoming and I've heard many occasions, people's good to see all the kids, all the families, parents, parents out at all the events. It was, you were there, it was packed. And everyone just felt good that, that we get out, we get together again.
Time is flying by. I didn't realize we hadn't had a meeting since homecoming. And I wanted to share an appreciation to the Sports Booster Club. I volunteered at halftime in the concession stand. Oh, my gosh. The work that those folks do in supporting our sports team and I was working hard. And all I did was restock shelves as everything was going out. So I want to shout out to everyone there. So I appreciate what they do. And I think that's all we have for board reports. So, Super Ken Swan, it is your game.
Great, thank you, thank you. Just wanted to take a moment before we start our presentations, just to share that tonight we had the opportunity to celebrate both our new teachers and our teachers who received tenure. It was a wonderful celebration to hear their paths to the Spencerport School District. Many of them have either taught or student taught, excuse me, or volunteered in the district. And it's just a wonderful way and representation to support our community. I also really enjoyed my first homecoming. I was reflecting on that and a tremendous amount of community and pride in the community on that day and thoroughly enjoyed it. And wanted the board and the community to know, had a wonderful opportunity to attend some professional development after homecoming in Albany at a superintendent's workshop for the past few days and spent a good amount of time with other superintendents from across the state, particularly superintendents in their first roles. About 50 new superintendents make up our cohort and had the opportunity to have a session with the Commissioner of Education talking about the focus on graduation requirements and where the state is on moving instructional. And so we'll take some time throughout the year to have those conversations and to really continue to envision our instructional programs here in Spencerport. I did share with our administrative colleagues that you could tell fall is here. We're really starting to settle in as I visit with principals and in the buildings. You can start to feel the routine and the constant, and that feels good. And with that, and our reflection of October, it allows us to reevaluate where we are now after a month of school. And I think that you had said, all that we're doing to try to be reflective of engaging students and making sure that they're connected to our community. So I don't want to steal our presentation or our presenter's thunder, but we're really focusing this month on how our students reintegrating back into the school district at all levels of the organization. What does student engagement look like? What are we seeing in terms of mental health needs, behavioral needs, and how we can support our students? So at this time, I would like to welcome Sean McCabe and Natalie Krasitis into, thank you Natalie, hard last name. To, to the front, if you don't mind. And Sean and Natalie are going to be presenting on Natalie's role as Coordinator of Student and Family Engagement and what that means to our high school and the work that we're doing this year.
All right, thank you, Kristen, and thank you for having us tonight. I think one of the things that I'm most excited about tonight, obviously, primarily, the first one is the great work that Natalie's doing with our kids. But it's also an opportunity for the board to get to meet Natalie. So she's been, yes, she's been a teacher with us for the last five years in our ELA department as a reading specialist. And so she's transitioned into this role. It's done a very, very nice job for us and we're thrilled that she is with us. And I think she has a very bright future in front of her in terms of she decides to pursue an administrative path. So I'm going to let Natalie talk mostly about what we've been working on. But I did want to start off with, just seems like a blink of an eye, but what last June when we met with the school board and we talked about, you know, what our ideas were at the high school in terms of the topic of learning loss. We kind of moved away from that term to learning gaps or unfinished learning. But this was the slide that we had showed you that I had gone through, through with you. And really, we had this coordinator of student and family engagement that we were proposing that would be taking on the role of really clubs and activities, eventually restorative practices, and working with my, working with counselors to monitor individual student progress. And so that was the original model that we had shared with you. So this is evolving. You know, we've been in school for a month. Natalie jumped in with both feet, helped to set up the school year for us. Might be more than she had planned is she was helping to measure desks were six feet apart and how we were staggering our lunches and getting everything all set. But as this has evolved, the idea of the coordinator of student family engagement was that it would allow administration and staff to focus on the whole student experience, social, social emotional well-being, and helping students to reconnect to the high school. And a big part of that that you mentioned, which I appreciate from all the members of the board, just an example was homecoming and the turnout and the participation that we had. I, I can't, I could give the exact number. It was over 800 tickets we sold for the dance, which is pretty incredible, pretty nerve wracking for me. But it was, it was good that it was outside too. And I think the kids had a great, a great time, even with the rain. And that's what we talked, I'm sorry to go off the ship, but we talked about that as a staff. Even though it wasn't perfect because it was raining a little bit, it was perfect for the kids because they just wanted to be together and be engaged with the school. So, and Natalie had a big part to do with that. So it also allows myself and the other assistant principals to focus on our content area coaches, which I'm looking forward to coming back eventually to talk to you with Jess Sillsby and our coaches about the work that they're doing currently on our academic workshop, which is getting ready to get up and running and working with our counselors. So I'm going to turn it over to Natalie to let her talk about what she's been working on in her role. And we'll go from there.
Thanks, Sean.
Yep.
So, hi, everyone. I'm Natalie Krasitis. It's nice to meet all of you. So as far as with individual student progress, like Sean said, this is our first month into school. So we're still trying to work this out and what that would look like. On as part of my role bi-weekly, I meet with the 10th grade counselors. I would argue that on a daily basis, I'm working with the 10th grade counselors and our alcohol, drug and alcohol counselor, our nurses, our social workers. So that's a day-to-day activity that I'm working with, with them. As far as with individual students, I have students that I'm working with every single day, whether it's just checking in with them, working with them as far as with talking with the teachers. If it's disciplinary, trying to work through that with them so that hopefully we could learn from that and not make that same mistake. Again, communication with teachers and our support staff, I'm very fortunate to have worked in this building for the last five years. So I want to give a big shout out to all of my teacher friends for helping me with this new position because they've been phenomenal. So working with them directly and just communicating with student needs, what's going on within the classroom and how we can best support the students. And I've gotten really good with speaking with parents, whether it's phone calls, emails, having them come in for parent meetings. So that's just kind of a little bit as far as with individual student progress. And like Sean said, this will grow as the year kind of continues. Oops, sorry. As far as student engagement, again, I want to give a big shout out to Nicole Arbore for stepping up as our StuGo advisor. Katie Wyant did this position for many, many years and was phenomenal. So very thankful for Nicole coming through and working with me as far as with setting up homecoming, working directly with our class advisors to set up some of the events that you'll see later on in this presentation. Part of student engagement too, I've been working on creating a list of the different clubs and activities at the high school, the model off of what they've done at the middle school, just to kind of streamline that process for those students who are coming up. I think especially for our teachers, if a student asks, hey, what club is, you know, offered, they can have that list. So that's going out to teachers and parents very soon. I've already shared that with our transition coordinator, Laura Costa, so she can work with her students to get them involved. Kelly Crosby, the autism specialist, emailed me today, so I was able to share that with her as well. Let's see, created a Microsoft form. So again, to create that, I've been reaching out to teachers to get their feedback as far as with what clubs or activities that they're doing currently, if they're interested in creating a new club. We have Dungeons and Dragons, which is a new club that's coming to the high school very soon. So I'm excited about that. I do write handwritten birthday cards to all the 10th graders. I stole that idea from Mrs. Shaw for ninth grade. So that's something too, and I've actually had a lot of students come up to me that I know or don't know, just saying, hey, thank you for that birthday card. So that's another way that I'm working with students to engage them. I am part of the CRE Summit, so working with students for our culturally responsive education. I've been going to our student COVID summit meetings after school, which is phenomenal to talk with those students on how we can best support the masking and some other things that are going on in the school. So that's been awesome. And then as far as with some future goals, it's to create a survey with BBT to just get feedback from students on what kind of clubs or activities they would like to see at the high school, what's working, what's something that we can improve on. So that's a future goal that hopefully we can work on with BBT and our students as well. All right, restorative practices. So we have done a little bit with staff as far as with using circles to kind of help our students, our staff, reengage in the school environment. I do this informally with students quite often as a peer mediation strategy. But this is something that, again, I would like to do more with our students to help them kind of resolve certain situations or a way to kind of talk through some more of our challenging situations that go on at the high school. So again, that's kind of a future vision of possibly creating a club with user sort of practices. I've also included a lot of this information on Schoology for our high school staff to refer to. But this is again, something that hopefully I can grow and get more practice in is using these restorative practices with our students especially. As far as a sample day, I would love to create a video for you guys to show that, but it's, it's, it depends on the day. Meeting with our administrative team, which big thank you to Sean because he's been amazing, Jess Sillsby, Aaron Shaw, Amy Sullivan. I could not do this without them as well. So we meet quite often to talk about, you know, what's going on at school, how can we best support our students? What's working, what's not working? How can we improve faculty meetings, ground assessment meetings? Like I said, I work directly with our school counselors, our drug and alcohol counselors quite often to meet the needs of especially the 10th grade students that I am focused on this year. Student management and discipline, again, like Mrs. Swan said, it's nice because it feels like we're kind of falling into a normal routine. So hopefully some of those behaviors that we were seeing at the beginning of the year, we, those will be going away. But I've been working with students a lot and how we can, you know, make sure we do what's right and improve on some of the behaviors that we've been seeing. So again, working directly with those, those students and staff to best support those students and working with their parents directly as well. And then again, I work directly with Nicole Arbore for StuGo, our clubs and activities advisors. I'm working with very closely Andy Casito, our central treasurer, has been phenomenal in helping me kind of phase into this role. So he's been great on as far as with creating those updated lists of clubs and activities. As far as social emotional learning goes, we have, I like to come up with like alliterative, alliteration for each month. So September was stamina September. So kind of getting teachers and students to practice some of these SEL activities within the classroom. So again, that's something that we shared with faculty in one of our faculty meetings. I've created this in Schoology to help support our, our staff and our students, especially with the social emotional learning piece. Because without that, I, as a teacher, content does not matter if the social emotional piece is not there. So that is a big focus that we have been working on. Social media, this is brand new for me. I've tried to avoid social media at all costs in my personal life, but I've gotten really good at it now as far as with the coordinator of student family engagement. So showing that on Twitter, on Instagram, just all the fun activities that are going on within our school environment. And then, like I said earlier, the different committees that I am now a part of to help engage all parts of our population at the high school. So this is just some images. This is what this clubs and activities list is going to look like once they send us out to parents and staff just to help streamline that process. So that if a student does come to them, they can easily say, hey, here's the advisor. This is when they meet. Here's a brief description to really help engage students back into the school environment. This is what it looks like on our Schoology page for our staff as far as different SEL resources, our restorative practice resources that are there for them. Their stamina September. So again, encouraging staff to just post pictures of what they're doing within the classroom for those SEL activities with our students. And then just, this is the fun stuff. I like to say Jake Lenhart and I always joke that my role is the fun police to really get students engaged into the school climate. So freshman orientation, we had over 40 student helpers that came to before school started and gave up their time to work with our incoming freshmen. And you can see some of the pictures there. It was really just awesome to have the students back into the building and excited to come to the high school. So that was one of the activities that we did to start off the year. This, I was so excited about the senior parking spot painting. We really threw that together pretty quickly. But it really turned out phenomenally as far as with, if you were, if you had a chance to see those parking spots. Students spent hours and hours and hours. And it really was a team effort, collaborative effort with parents, with, with staff members who showed up. That one ended up being my favorite. I didn't buy enough paint and that's exactly how they left that. So something for me to learn as well as I grow with this role is now I know what worked and what I can kind of improve on for next time. So it just, this just really came out great. And this just kind of shows you how I worked with the class advisors. They had to submit it in Schoology and we had to approve that ahead of. How I worked with the class advisors, they had to submit it in Schoology and we had to approve that ahead of time. So we had an idea of what those parking spots would look like. And then open house, again, a great turnout. You see some parent feedback up there. They just said it was great to be back in the building and be able to meet. Especially directly with teachers. And again, we have some of our student helpers down here who are directing parents and directing. Other students in the building to to just know where they needed to go. And then jazz ensemble, which is always. Probably the highlight of the evening as well, did a great job performing. And then homecoming. So this is really, thank you for all of your feedback on that. This is really a team. Effort. I could not do this on my own. There are so many people who helped with this. And it truly was amazing. I spoke with Nicole today. I think they raised over thirteen thousand dollars. For student government for homecoming. That's not including some of the. The fees that have to come out for some of the events, but they really did. We had probably over two thousand people at the homecoming event. Like Mr. McCabe said, over seven hundred students at the dance. Even in the pouring rain. So these are just some of the activities that students participated in during spirit week. We had our senior breakfast, the sunrise breakfast, which was awesome to see all the seniors get together before school. The parade and again, some of the teachers that were participating and then the pep rally for homecoming. And as far as future activities and goals as the year continues. Again, working more with our restorative practices, especially working with students. Our SEL monthly themes, something to keep going with. So October outlook, October and how would that look within our classroom? How can we? Really meet those social emotional needs of our students. Red ribbon week is coming up, so Kate Zopcu has done a great job planning that for our students. My goal is to create, like I said, that student interest survey to really gauge what students are looking for, because that's truly the most important part of this. What do they want? What do they need? At the school. So that's something to work on as well. And as you can see, just continuing to work with our class officers and student groups. To create some of those fun activities that we've done in the past and keep those going, whether it's the winter pep rally or a hundred day celebration. I'm really excited to possibly have our L family night, our English language learners. And I know Mr. Lesinko is. Working on that as well, but I think that's a population of students that could really benefit from an L family night. So that's another goal. That I have as I move forward with this role. While I have the bat, unless there's another slide that Sean added.
No, I didn't trick you with another slide. So that's an overview again of the work that that Natalie's been doing for us at the high school. And again, I think she's done a wonderful job for us. And as she said. We have goals in terms of evolving this over the coming months and working with the entire staff. With this theme, the social emotional learning pieces Natalie said is probably to me, and not probably, but is the most important. Component as we transition back into school. And how are we trying to support our students and understanding again that. That old or not old, but that that saying of all in the same storm, but in different boats. And understanding how we need to support our students differently. Based on what they what what their needs are. And Natalie's focused on that as well with the SEL piece. So. That's our update for right now. I don't know if there's any questions. Hi everyone, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just curious, how many clubs our high school currently has roughly? And whether or not they've all kicked off or to be kicked off later in the year?
Most of them have started, have recently started. God, I'm trying to like, I know there's like five pages. I can tell you that. We have a number of. Of clubs and activities at the high school. I would say at least forty. I would say with different advisors and different groups that are meeting.
I think that's one of the things that that Natalie's really, another key point is her relationships with teachers in the building. And being able to to find advisors and people who are excited to to be able to work with kids in that avenue. And we have. Great teacher participation. But as you know, time progresses and people have families and they don't have as much free time, you have to find other people to take over those clubs and activities. And Natalie has really done a nice job with that in terms of recruiting. Teachers to to take on those roles and responsibilities, so.
I think your idea for student survey is really wonderful and I hope you're able to do that. One thing I'd love to see is if there's any way. And as part of the survey, we can try to elicit which students maybe are not as engaged right now. So that the new clubs we do form can help get some of those kids who who might be feeling. Sort of on the outside, get them pulled into our community a little bit better.
Absolutely. So you know, this job certainly came at a result of the last two years or couldn't come at a better time. So Natalie, since you've been in a position for like two months now. If you could answer, what do you think? You see is the biggest challenge or obstacle nine twelve as you look at the horizon? The biggest challenge and how do you, how are you gonna plan to go ahead and and address that challenge?
Well, I think with, you know, I've been talking to a lot of my teacher friends in other districts as well. And I think a lot of these students have been out of school for a year, year and a half. And how do we get those students reacclimated within that school setting socially, behaviorally? You know, it's really reteaching or teaching many of these skills and behaviors that students. Have not experienced for quite a long time. So I think it's it's really, again, teachers have been doing a phenomenal job working with these students, the administrative team, working with these students. But there's just so many layers to that, whether it's the masking component, kind of the world that we're living in right now. I think it's just, and that's where I think those peer mediation, those groups would be really helpful. Is how do we, how we might not have to come to an agreement on certain things. But at least work together to better that school environment. And I'm seeing that starting to happen as we continue. To work on those routines and procedures within the high school, but I do see that. As a challenge because it is very divided right now. So how do we bring? People together in a way that we can not necessarily have to agree, but work together. So I, that to me. Is the biggest challenge. But at the end of the day, kids are kids. And I think that they just want to have fun and that's where homecoming and the dance. Really reminded me as a teacher what this is all about. They just have fun together as a group. Outside engaging in those activities. So I think that for me is just. Remembering that and creating those structures and routines that have worked in the past and moving forward with that. But also, I think. Learning that we do have to change some things and that things aren't perfect. And me as adults have to reflect on this and how could we better? The school environment at the high school and meet those needs of students that maybe are not always heard as loudly as other groups.
Thank you.
So along that same thing, our agenda items for the rest of the meeting are all about dollars and cents and and measurements and measurable. This is a new position, new concept of what we're doing. How are you personally going to measure the success and how are we as a district gonna? Measure success? There's no assessment for this. How do we know? We're doing a good job or what are we gonna do for that?
I mean, I think that's a great question. I I don't have the answer to that right now. I think homecoming is a great first example of the success that. And the importance of having these clubs and activities in in the building and within the district. I think having those surveys and really talking to the students and getting their feedback. And then taking that and and figuring out as an administrative team and working with our our amazing teachers on how do we meet? The needs of those students within, at least at the high school. That's where I work directly. But I also think too, working with our middle school staff is really important. I was a middle school teacher for four years. There's still a lot of our freshmen in that middle school mentality. So how do we work through that? As far as measuring that, I I just think it's. Again, that feedback is is so, so important and making sure that our our teachers too feel supported. Within those clubs and activities because those cannot run if it were not for. Our amazing staff and teachers. So I think that that's really important as well, is making sure that they feel supported to meet the needs of those students.
I think the other thing is a great question, Kevin, is we're just getting ready for the Monroe County Youth Survey. To administer that in November. So that's something that happens every two years. I think that'll give us a really good baseline. As we know, this is not something, you know, COVID, we're still in the middle of pandemic as we all know. Is not over and it's not this, these challenges are not going to be solved overnight. This is going to be a process over years. And I think that baseline, which some of the questions I'll ask about is. Connection to student, a connection to adults in a building. Which is always fascinating and a really key indicator in terms of students and how they feel comfortable in school. We'll be able to get that baseline information. And then in two years, I mean, that's a way out, but but then we can compare back and forth to see. Have we made that type of progress? So that would be some hard data that we're going to be able to use as well. So. I think one more to follow up, because you made a comment that struck me. About the freshman, right? So since you've taught middle school and high school, you got great global view of both of those. So you think the freshmen, you think they're just like. Third year middle schoolers or they truly first year high schoolers, the ones we have right now because of what they went through?
If you asked me that two weeks ago, I probably would have said third year. Middle schoolers, I think again, with the teachers and the administrative team really working on those routines and procedures, I think that has helped. But again, there was a big loss of 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 school time for these students. And that is to me very evident on some of those structures and routines. And it's just the social component of it. I mean, it's still, they're just figuring themselves out. They're in a new school environment. You know, it's not exactly normal either with lunches still being how they are. So. It's, I think that's just going to take time because they haven't experienced a true normal school setting in in many years. So. I think it's improving, but it's going to take time and not just ninth grade, but I see it with my tenth grade class as well too. It's a maturity thing.
I think at the very least, at least, at least the Ago Niners. Had a clean slate going into school, it was a nice break, you know. Kids from middle school to high school, so maybe it helped a little bit some of it, you know.
Yeah, I think too, just the fact that we were able to have. Some of those events that for a year we were not able to have freshman orientation and homecoming. And so. I think that that is very helpful for those students. As well to feel connected or reconnected in the building, but there's still a lot of work, especially for groups of students that. For many years have not been heard. And I think that's something in my role that I'm really. Excited to work with those groups of students to get their voices heard as well.
I want to thank Sean and Natalie and just, I also want to reiterate. We've talked a lot about the student engagement and the student activities which have been beautiful so far. But I also want to publicly thank yourself, Sean, your whole team, because I know that there's been a tremendous amount of outreach. To parents and and families on an individual basis as well. And part of this work is also making the family connection into the building. And so thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
Well, we sincerely appreciate the board's support and the district's support and Kristen's support. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So much. We've been through.
Oh, yeah. I can't wear these heels anymore. I used to be able to wear them, but I'm walking a lot, so.
So I'd like to invite Ty. Our next presentation has to do with some of our continued planning. Around our instructional support. Particularly if we were to experience large numbers where we might have to contemplate. Closing a school or. Our system at large and also what to do for students who are quarantining or need to be in isolation. And so I'd like to thank Ty as well as Joe, who's in the audience. To really for their collaboration and their work and in putting some of these ideas together.
Alright, thank you Ms. Swan. So good evening once again. Like Ms. Swan just shared, you know, my hope is just to provide an overview of. What we would do should something happen with COVID-19 or the outbreak, both at a massive scale or possibly at a smaller scale. Unfortunately, as you know, this is our reality and one of the things that we have done for the last, let's say, two years is develop contingency plans and. These items right here were developed last year. So these are just a real quick refresher for the Board of Education. In terms of if we're to have to shut down a school or the entire district as early as tomorrow. So if this is to happen tomorrow at the K five level, I think with our pre-K students, sorry, pre-K five level. With our pre-K students, we would just continue to utilize instructional packets. The reason being those are earliest learners haven't grown accustomed to utilizing a laptop to date. And so we would just work with our four pre-K teachers on providing packets for those students to complete until school reopened. At the kindergarten through first grade level, what we would do is we're working right now on. Providing packets up until Thanksgiving recess. This provides our youngest learners an opportunity to acclimate to the school district, to their classroom. There's been disruption, as you know, our kindergarten students, many of which have never entered a school before. So provides our teachers enough time to acclimate them to the the routines, the systems of being students. Many of our youngest learners have worked, they're operated in isolation and they haven't really encountered. Social interaction with other human beings outside of their family. And I think those are some of the challenges that we're facing right now. Across the school district, just supporting those students and having them develop those social skills. To be good learners. I think then, once that, if that did occur, this note right here, it's going to take us a couple of days just to get laptops in students' hands and the families' hands. Mr. Allen and his team did a remarkable job back in March of twenty twenty of us collating. All the laptops for our K five learners, us then having. Opportunity for families to come in and pick up those laptops from here at district office where we kind of had a drive through system. It was really a remarkable feat. And it was occurred relatively quickly too. So then two, five, you know, it's our up to our teachers now to provide our students how to acclimate to their learning management system. And then how to also utilize Zoom should this occur. So this is a schedule that was been developed last year or two, has been shared. This is what would occur once again if we were remote. For the entire building or entire K five level. So our students would work with their classroom teacher. We would divide the class in half. Just to minimize how many individuals are working with their teacher remotely. So for example, if there's twenty four students in the class, I have here A through M. Would provide that. You know, make a lot of the teacher to make that decision, who they like in the morning, who they like in the afternoon. And some of that might be contingent on parents' needs as well. And so this is just an example of what we would do just to. Once again, make it more mental for the teacher. They would provide synchronous and asynchronous work from nine o'clock to eleven thirty. Then work with the other half of their students in the afternoon from one to three thirty. Our special area teachers would follow this schedule right here. And provide direct support. For those students. Based on the five day rotation. We would continue with other services. And provide support virtually. For individuals requiring tier two or tier three support. If they have an IP. Or any other related service needs. The six A's level. Our students would follow their assigned schedule. Would work remotely with their teacher and go through synchronous and asynchronous learning. Once again, we'd also provide support to those individuals virtually. Based on those aforementioned areas. Here's a middle school schedule. So a student would follow the schedule. So they would know that if on the eighth grade, you know, eight o'clock, I have period one. Now, we're also monitoring screen time and there's not an expectation that students would be on their device in front of a computer for the entire seven hour day. So that balance of synchronous and asynchronous learning is really, really important. But they would be following the schedule. So if they have ELA at this block. Math this block, they would receive that support. For synchronous instruction on a daily basis if it were to be shut down. You'll see a theme here. High school would follow the same process. Then you can see on the left hand side, this traditional schedule for the high school. Here's this Punchbort Academy schedule. Somewhere in the middle school, it'd be a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning. In some ways. It's easier if an entire building shuts down. Just because we have these systems in place. It's all hands on deck. I think like Ms. Swan shared, you know, one of the things that we're working on right now. It's a real reality for all of us. Students that are in isolation and students that need to be in quarantine. As you know, with some with isolation. They are sick. We're trying to keep them away from other individuals. Versus quarantine. For those students that have been exposed. So we're gonna start first with isolation. We're approaching this similar if a student had the flu. Broke a leg and weren't able to come to school for a couple of weeks. Where we would, if they're up to it. Provide them that opportunity. To receive support virtually. With a DLC tutor, so our district learning center. Teachers then would provide work to the tutoring center. And their heart, if you send it over. But they had the option of providing that tuner access to the learning management system. So for example, I was a teacher. I would just add the tutor. To my Schoology course. So they could just follow along. That's one less thing that I have to print off, send over. Obviously, this approach is contingent on the capacity. And you're gonna hear that theme. You know, having fifteen. You know, having fifteen students, which is approximately what we have now across the district versus a hundred and fifty. What is manageable? For those students at K five level that would be in quarantine. Once again, I'll go back to us providing the device for the students and getting it in their hands. So once again, Mr. Allen and his team, we have a system in place. Should this occur for a student. We work, school counselor works with the parent. And we work with our courier system and getting that device to the home. And ask when the student returns to return the laptop to the main office, whatever building it may be, so we can recollect the device. Teachers, once again, will provide schoolwork. Have the opportunity to use the learning management system and students will work asynchronously. Our students will also have access to the DLC. And the tutor will provide them direct support. Here are some examples of things that we would ask teachers to prepare for students so that they could work on asynchronously. Obviously, each one of our core areas, just some examples that we would then encourage our teachers to utilize. So there's some consistency. There are six twelve level. Teachers, once again, if there's a student that's in quarantine, provide more schoolwork. The student can work asynchronously. We will work with the student and their families. Upon their return. Possibly, but pause when we're grading. So for example, the student at the end of a marking period is out of school for extended period of time. Many times we'll just mark them as incomplete. Once they receive their quarterly report, we give them enough time. We work with the student and the family to figure out how long do you need to make up any missed work because we don't want to penalize the students. Especially at the commencement level, knowing that impacts their GPA to impact on post-secondary plan. We recognize. This is a balancing act. At what point is the tipping point? In terms of our capacity with our numbers.
So Ty, you mentioned, I'm sure you have this, as far as food, transportation facilities, they have Plan B's also. Are we ready to go?
I'm not sure. Yes, so I will defer to Mr. Salzberg or Mr. Wood on that one.
Not easy thing to forecast, but do we have any idea of what would be the tipping point? What, when are we going to be, oh crap, we have so many people that are in isolation or quarantine?
We're okay right now. What's wrong?
With how many people?
Uh, we have about a dozen, fifty.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say that that's what we keep looking at. And I don't know if we have what that tipping point is. You know, we keep looking at how are our numbers? Our numbers are pretty good when compared to regionally. Um, and making sure that we have ample resources in the tutoring center. So these are the, these are going to be the ongoing conversations, just like in Sean's presentation. We have to, all of these type of approaches need to be adaptable and we need to be able to respond. When um, our situation, if our situation changes. And so we're, we literally talk about this family.
Yes, I think too that, you know, if you look at our K five students with accessing the DLC. You know, what we found is. Their availability, because if they have, if they're unable to come to school, then the family is either home with them. Or the student is at a relative's house, a grandparent's house. Do they have Wi-Fi? So these are all things that, you know, we have to take into consideration. We're also working, I think Miss Swan's comment, uh, just about an example that we're using the high school. Of us exploring the expansion of our academic workshops. It's a program in existence for a long time. It's really been a bit of credit recovery. But if we look at this and expand it so that students, if they are in some capacity. They have direct access to a teacher and receive one of the core areas, one-on-one support. I think that's really, really powerful. I think it's really important that we. Continue and possibly implement this, knowing that we want to ensure that our students receive that.
I think that's a great idea. I was actually going to ask a question around that, what happens to the student who comes back? Who's missed so much work that then they're struggling, where can they get help?
And I think one of the things that we're wrestling with at the K five level is just the student's capacity.
Right.
You know, a lot of this is contingent on transportation. So I think that's something else that we want to provide. And how many of our elementary students, you know, their their stamina, their endurance, if we're to do it after school? So I think we want to be creative with that. I think going back to Mr. Allen's question in terms of what our tipping point is, I would say probably fifty.
I was gonna ask a question on that. So in terms of tutors and staff, are they hired already?
Correct, yes.
Okay, they're already there, so.
Our DLC?
Yes, so our students able to leave and they're able to get set up with a tutor in a couple of days and.
Pretty seamless. It's, we have a system in place where um, the school counselor, each one of our six buildings would facilitate that. They would submit a tutorial request. Um, we then process that. Um, that's done, I'd say we make those arrangements within thirty-six hours. That occurs too for health reasons, if there's a behavioral issue as well.
And the um, students having access to Wi-Fi, I know when we first back in March, that was one of the concerns. And I'm sure since then, families have obviously moved and changed. And so do we have any idea if, how many of our students have access to Wi-Fi at home or how do you get them set up for that?
Well, one of the things that we do have is that parents can contact Mr. Allen's department. And if they require a Wi-Fi device, he processes that and supports them and works with those families directly.
And it happens relatively. My thing is like the over on quarantine for ten days and it's taken us seven days. Which, by the way, I've been working four weeks to get a two or higher at the college level. So I'm not being critical, I'm just saying if it take for real. If it takes that long, then we've missed our window, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think of it, their isolation and quarantine for ten days, you know, our target is by the third day, they're receiving support. Direct support from one part of it, a warm handoff, if you will.
Can I just a real quick question about our younger learners, our K five students? Uh, you talked about them getting acclimated to their laptops. So for some reason, we had to put this plan into action quickly. Um, are they currently being acclimated to that so they could be able to go on to a Zoom session or is that going to be done?
We want to present those and then we'll just share this information with our team leaders and our principals tomorrow. That's our plan.
Okay, thank you.
As as a healthy reminder, yeah, should this happen, please be advised that your students should be able to navigate your learning management system and access.
Yeah, because that'll eliminate that gap. I remember when this happened a year and a half ago, there was such a gap for all of us, not just Punchbort, but for everybody. To get students into that, being able to get into the Zoom and get into the system, so.
Laurie, I don't know what your experience is with younger learners, but. But you know, just anecdotally, mine has come home, they have started that. She talks about the learning that they're, they're going through the motions and they have to. I think it's happening, right?
Um, I just had a question about the tipping point and when we think about our elementary learners, I know there was a district recently where they had to quarantine. Um, elementary classrooms. So we talk about going full remote, would we ever consider doing? Let's say we've had two classrooms that have to go in quarantine. Would we be able to do a remote situation for those students? Or would we just try to do packets and things like that?
No, I think we would try to be remote. I think it's all contingent on the health of the teacher, right? They're the cause of why we have to quarantine now. You know, then we're gonna have to work up with the sub and kind of provide unnecessary support and assistance. So, you know, our hope with that we would. Somewhere where I just shared with Ms. Brown that we would provide them that direct instruction within, you know, my data.
And Laurie, we've talked this again, like these are some of the planning conversations, like if we had to do that and we utilize some of the tutors of the. To the learning center, could some of those tutors be specific to those younger elementary grade levels? So they would have the familiarity with some of those online skill-based lessons. As opposed to keeping people K twelve, you know, we want to allow them to be a little bit more targeted. So so those are the types of planning and thinking that we're doing, like if we had to quarantine two or three classes. If we are at the individual level or the building level, um, that's, those are all the scenarios that we're trying to figure out.
I I want to clarify something. So Ty, one of the things that you said, and we understood where you're coming from. That it would be easier if entire building shut down. That will never be our our goal or fallback. Um, and you didn't imply it that way, but I want to make sure that that people know that we're not going to use as a a crutch to make it easier for us. Um, by um, closing things down any sooner than we have to. Our goal this year, our goal last year was to get kids in school as much as we possibly can. So so we don't plan on using it as a crutch to say, okay, we we we're going to shut down because it's easier to do it a certain way. Our goal is always to have kids in school, so.
That would be the last resort. I mean, I think I can just, I can come back to March thirteenth, twenty twenty, when we put this plan in motion and we started this. And, you know, we're still trying to make up words. The last thing we want to do is close down anything.
Put that out publicly, that number of. Hi, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I access one question to the panelists one? So regarding the facilities, transportation, food, security. Um, do they have um, Plan B's too? If we have a, for the tipping point, they have stuff ready to go, if it's a switch tomorrow?
We would, um, if we had to go remote, Dave, we would probably, we look at the plan that we had in place when we were remote. We've been focusing right now on the instructional side of that and all of the case scenarios that we would absolutely. And we'll be developing plans for those operational parts of the house as well. Um, so we're moving on to our series policies and Jonathan is coming up.
Alright, thank you for having me once again for part four of the five thousand series policies. Um, kind of grouped into three areas. The first area is a number of additional financial-related policies. That primarily the business office is responsible for. Um, we didn't have a lot of comments about these or questions. Um, one primarily was the first one, the publication of the district's annual financial statement. Um, our current and the revised policy from Erie One asked. For the financial statements to be published in July or August. Um, we have typically waited until the audit is released, um, to release those and then we do publish them according to policy. If we were to move towards um, making sure that they were done in July and August, then we would have to put a disclaimer on them. To say that the financial results would not be um, complete until the audit is complete. So if that is the route that you. Want to go, we can implement that. I think so. That was one of the comments. The others. Um, on this particular section, if if anybody has any questions about any of these. Or move to some of the other ones.
I'll I'll admit, one of the reasons why there are fewer comments is I didn't get through all of them. So, um, but I appreciate Lori's comments and Greg's. Uh, so so uh, you you raised just that question about the publication. So so what what is our proposed results? Do we, um, so there's a a note in here that ed law says it's a certain time. Can we can't by policy change ed law? So so we still have to publish it even with.
With a disclaimer.
With the disclaimer. Those real quick.
There was one question about the allegations of fraud about the communication. Um, and we do, uh, when we do one-off policies, we do communicate with all the staff. That a policy has been approved by the board and then it's been posted to the website. We would have to come up probably with a special plan for this, once the entire manual is updated at the end of the year. Um, and but some sort of roll-out communication process for that.
Okay, yeah, my concern is just, I don't want to implement a policy and the staff member doesn't know about it. And then they've accidentally breached the policy that they are one of.
Yeah, we would, we would have to put something out, letting them know that the policies have been revised. And telling them what specific policies that they need to review. Um, but yeah, we would have to come up with something because it would be.
Yeah.
Jonathan, I'm gonna, I'm gonna circle back to the publication of the district's annual financial statement. So if we did post that in July or August with a disclaimer, after the audit, would we have to repost it? That might be a Rick Jonathan question. I don't know.
I knew it can confirm with Tom afterward, but my my response, if you were not here, if you're here. Is that um, we would still post it with a disclaimer. Once the completed uh, financials are complete. We submit to the paper already saying that our uh, financial statement is complete. And if you would like to come in and view it, you can do it in these places.
Okay. Thank you. Um, kind of the second group of policies, we have really policies that are implemented through our director facilities, Nelson Drake. And uh, some of you tonight that are Darren Price, our new director of facilities, who'll be assuming the role in Nelson's, Nelson's retirement. The Nelson's appointed and handles the pesky. The pest management pesticide use policy, he's the individual who's responsible for ensuring that we're complying with those. And we do send out all the notifications that are required annually when we do apply uh, local pesticides. Um, in small locations and or other pesticides such as the herbicide that the board approved a couple of months ago. Energy conservation and recycling in the schools, yes, one of the comments was about the policy itself seemed to be much more limited in scope. Than than what was there before. I I don't know why Erie One chose to remove that language. We can keep that language in if you, if the board wants to. Maintain that focus on recycling, if you will.
Um, I'm not, not what is it, keeping the existing language? It's just that the policy just sounds a little fuzzy. Um, to me, um, and I do think that recycling and conservation are issues that are important to our students. And are important to our community. I'd like to see us be a little bit more of a leader in that regard. Um, I have any issue in particular with the Bosie's policy, it just, it seemed like it didn't have a lot of substance behind it.
Yes, it did look much more trimmed down than it than what it was twenty years ago.
Maybe this is one we could kind of flag, um, to give further consideration to before policy manuals then finalize.
We can do that. And that was one of the recommendations I have for one on the next slide as well. Um, is that we can revisit these before, because once the board okay these, then I will send them off to Erie One. We'll get everything back in the springtime and then we'll have to do another review. At that point, we can. Check in on these or we can uh, simply keep the language that we have.
Jonathan, does you know of any rationale as to why that policy seemed so weak? You know, that struck me is when I opened it, as I looked at ours and then looked at that one, is there any rationale behind it or are we unsure?
Uh, unsure. I tried to look at the legal citation for General Municipal Law one twenty dash AA. And it didn't have anything in there requiring school districts to have the sort of recycling program. But the prior policy had in it was just more of a general statement that municipalities can impose recycling programs. Yeah, um, so I don't know if they took their only way with that twenty years ago or or what. I mean, I can look into it more and contact Erie One and see why they made those changes. Um, those changes may have been made. Before even the last decade, okay?
So Jonathan, is there some place where where you have, I I I look through the one note that you have that indicates. Jonathan, is there some place where you have, I looked through the one note that you have that indicates a schedule of sorts that shows when policies are going to be covered? Because one of the things I noticed as I was going through the policy on your list right here, there's a 5640 about smoking. That what was, yeah, so smoking with tobacco use. So it's in this block, but it's not one that we've reviewed yet. So are we going back to that? Is that already a newer one that already is in line with what?
We will go back to that. It's more about just getting through the process that I'm going through the rest of these 5,000 with Nelson Drake and with Julie Chernetsky to make sure we get the facilities and the transportation policy. And there are still some more facilities related policies just that we were not able to get to just yet. And then we're going to try and finalize those to get you the next batch of policies or review. And then you still have some that on the control sheet page at the top of the 5,000 series. I'd say at the top, but then at the bottom of the control sheet, there are other policies that are either no longer used by Erie one BOSI's or are Spencer Port specific policies that Erie one doesn't consider. So those and might have to hit those later. And then we'll still have like coming back to 5410, the purchasing policy that we talked about last meeting. I have more information on that one. That one really was Erie one. They just moved everything into regulation. But that was almost 10 to 12 years ago when they did that. It's just been that long since we've updated all policies.
So this is, I thought there was something that we had that was a checkbox or showed when we're doing the things, but okay. Thank you.
So the last group of policies that we have for today are the transportation related policies. One question did come in about the transportation of our urban suburban students and that is done by the city school district. At this point, they do not. They were exploring. There was discussion in the news media at the opening of this year as to whether urban suburban school districts could assume that responsibility. But we're in the same sort of bus driver shortage that the city school. We're just not quite get as hard as they were. There was a question about the idling school buses on school grounds. When I did check with Erie one, our policy was a 2005 policy that had a lot more than what they recommended in 1999. Their policy was always the short policy that they gave us. So at some point, the district decided to include all of that information in there so we can retain it. And then just have a more comprehensive policy than what Erie one suggested with respect to the bus idling. And then finally, with the drug and alcohol testing for school bus driver, there was a question about the legalization of marijuana. This time, because it is a schedule one drug, the federal government and the federal department of transportation would disqualify someone if they tested positive for that. Because it is a schedule one drug. Last month, the current presidential administration put forth the proposal to reschedule it to a schedule two drug. I don't know if that would change department of transportation's interpretations on how that would affect our current employees if they were to test positive. But when I checked with our director of transportation, all of our employees are regularly informed that they're not allowed to do that when they get randomly drug tested if they are our third party testing facility. They do inform them as well. So they're constantly reminded that just because it is legalized in New York doesn't mean that you can do it and maintain your federally regulated commercial drivers license.
They write the site, right? Transportation, the drug testing, right?
Yes, they're randomly selected.
They go right there to do it.
Yes. See, I think that was everything. Any more questions that I can? All right. Thank you.
Next time, can you figure out a way to song them and make it a little more entertaining for them? We appreciate Jonathan. Thank you.
You know, next we have a number of business related items on our agenda. So I'm going to pass it over to Rex who will walk us through.
Thank you, Kristen. For the first one, I did send out a revised memo. You should have gotten the email. It was placed in board docs. Kevin had mentioned he wanted to draw out a little clarification.
Yeah. So actually that, was that one that we're in present agenda?
No, it wasn't. In short, this is item 6.4. It's an additional allocation to fund the capital reserve. And what I've tried to do is share with you why, when we, when the board originally identified this in June, based on our recommendations, we had put up to $1 million for the capital reserve for building projects. After the fieldwork was completed, there was an additional surplus of about $650,000. Again, based on the recommendation by our external auditors, they'd like to see the board identify where that should be placed. I've tried to provide you an example of why that additional surplus occurred and what areas. And then the clarification that Kevin had shared with me was that he wanted to make it clear that this was an approval of the additional surplus of an amount to not to exceed 651. Therefore, when we get to the next agenda item, you'll see that the full allocation to the capital reserve for building projects is 1.6 million. And not just up to 651. That was the clarification that Kevin wanted to share.
Yeah. So the big thing was, and we had a chance to read this, is a big part of the change in revenue from sales tax. So that last year, we weren't projecting that. And then another part of it was, and I'm using board member terminology, not account terminology here. Last year, when we created our budget, we were told that the state was going to withhold 20%. And that didn't come through and they gave it back to us, if you will. And that's what really gave us this windfall is that that money that they said they're taking away and then did not. So had that followed through, this would be a totally different conversation here about this total amount that's going in to the capital improvement reserve. So I'm excited about that because we all know we need capital reserve. We need to go out with another project in the near future and this is going to help us with our minimizing the public's share that they have to do. So any other discussion on this? So do I have a motion? To allocate the, or to accept the allocation of fund the capital reserve as presented in the memo from Mr. Wood? I'll make a motion. Second, with Kate, all in favor?
Good. So, thank you. So the next item again, really is just having the board authorize what the final amounts are. Again, in this memo, I'll try to share what was presented in June as compared to what we're actually doing. Everything essentially is the same other than the for the capital reserve for doing projects, which obviously just approved. So with that, I will open it up. Any questions?
With this, on page three, you had, so we have a balance of last year of 18 million in all of our reserves. And then this year, it's 20 million. So back in June, you gave a presentation about reserves. And it showed a number of 14.2 million for reserve. So was that less the unappropriated probably?
So what most likely, I don't recall specifically the slides you're thinking of during the presentation, Kevin. But usually when I'm doing a presentation on just the reserves, you're looking at the restricted. So this 18 to 20 million includes those non-spendable items. It also includes the reserve for encumbrances and if any, have you appropriated for taxes as well as the unrestricted or on what they call unappropriated. Typically at that 14, those would not be included during that presentation I provide on reserves.
Okay. So if we had that same number here, looking at this table, it would be almost $4 million left because of the encumbrances and unappropriated. Correct?
Not sure I understand. Not knowing what the basis is of, you know, going back, I don't know that I want to.
Okay.
Give you a.
I can appreciate.
Positive confirmed.
Yeah.
Yes. So.
Yeah. Okay. So, but that concept is basically what I'm seeing. So the difference in what we had projected or what was last year to this year is about that difference between the unrestricted.
I'm good. Okay. Thank you.
So each year, what we, our responsibility as a board is to assign these funds and we had a meeting back in July that talked about what our expected numbers were and now to a confirmation of those numbers. So we've had this conversation, but by all means, if we want to ask more questions about what's going into each reserve, now's an opportunity. But our goal is at the end of this discussion is to finalize the allocation of our fund balance and reserves. So we have any questions that we haven't already asked direct in company? So with that, I have a motion to accept the allocation for 2020, 21 fund balance and reserve. Like to make a motion to accept the allocation of the 2020, 21 one balance and reserves. In secondary, all in favor?
So last but not least, it's been a very long time since we've had someone from our auditing firm come in and present to the board. I'd like to welcome Tom Zuber, partner with Raymond F. Wager, Division of Mingle Metzger Bar, to come and sort of share with you what he shared with the audit committee. But I thought really in particular with, you know, some newer board members and I don't know that. Think about your, I'm not sure if any of you have actually had Tom present while being on the board. But really, given the state affairs with the pandemic, the federal stimulus, all the things that have gone on throughout this year and a half, almost two years. Again, I think Tom is an excellent source. He does many of the school districts in the county and outside the county to help provide you and ask you any questions. And lastly, you don't have to hear from me. You can hear from someone else. Tom.
Tom, you're supposed to start with, are there any further questions?
Well, I will tell you this, we have met with the audit committee. As you've mentioned, there were a lot of numbers, people there, actual people there. Actually, this district does have a very active audit committee as it relates to key members on there more so than many of our other clients. Why? That's really commendable for this district showing the participation in our community. I think it's very positive. As you mentioned, the financial information here, you know, it's a 60-page audit report, 66-page audit report. I will not go through the audit report. But what I'd like to do is just give you a few highlights of some of the discussions we had with the audit committee. Again, we met with the audit committee back on September 29th. And we had a very good discussion. We probably had about a 35, 40 minute discussion on the financial information. As you know, these, these financial statements, they're really the result of a budget process you started more than two years ago. Right? Or almost two years ago. And in that time, we've had a lot of different uncertainty and I think you guys just discussed some of that uncertainty a few minutes ago. Right? We went into this year into a pandemic, right? And, and some of the things that happened early on, you know, in August, you receive a state aid check for excess costs and the state actually did withhold 20% of that state A chat. They took it for a little while. They eventually gave it back, probably about mid-year. But they did take it and I think that set a red flag up for many, many school districts. And, and so some of the decisions that were made early on really are a result or are seen in the results of the financial statements right now. You know, you have that that happened. In addition to that, you had a lot of the federal stimulus money. So you received three different rounds of federal stimulus money. The first round happened in 2021, right? Which was called the cares money. And what they did, they took state aid from you and replaced it with this one-time federal stimulus, right? And then even as recently as when the governor came out with his budget and you had these two new stimulus packages, the Essor, or I'm sorry, the Carissa funds and then the ARPA funds, these two new additional rounds of money. They were part of the governor's budget where he was taking state aid and replacing it with this one-time federal stimulus money, which really created a lot of uncertainty for many school districts. And it really wasn't until legislative runs came out where we did see some clarity. There was some replacement of some foundation aid with some restrictions, right? And then they took this one-time federal stimulus money and put it in a different spot, right? It's still there. You still have access to it, but it's still going to go away in the future. So you still have to be careful on how you utilize those funds. But, but you know, so you were 80% through your school year till you really got some clarity of where you were going to be going and what really was going to happen. And I think some of the other things that was very surprising was the results of things like your sales tax, right? Some things that happened, which were a little outside the ordinary, was the internet sales tax, which happened at the tail end of 2019. So when the box store sales went down and everybody started purchasing on the internet, sales tax remained consistent. Actually, it went up a little bit. So I think we did see that and I think that was a surprise for quite a few people out there. So, you know, the financial results are pretty consistent with most of our clients. We got it more in some of the school districts in the area. And I think for the most part, many of our clients were seeing very, very positive financial results. And it really was because of the decisions that were made early on. And then I think that really is the discussion that we've had with, with many, many schools is that the decisions you made created some very good, positive financial results. And then the next step is what do we do in order to continue to have a very good, stable, positive financial position? And that's reallocating or reinvesting those dollars back into your reserves. And that's exactly what we talked about doing tonight. And I think that's very, very positive. In fact, you're using about $2.1 million in fund balance to support your budget. So for 2021, you used about $2.1 million. So you didn't levy a tax equal to $2.1 million, right? And then you did roll some of those surpluses back into your reserves, right? So you refunded your reserves in total of about $4.6 million. Okay. So, and I think you're right, the reserve balances, they started out at 14 million this year and then they went up to just above 16 million. And then the total fund balances was that $20 million number that you were referring to. So that was your fund balance, your non-spendable, your restricted, all your unassigned fund balances. So that's at 4% that school districts are allowed to maintain. So again, very positive financial results. I think you're being, you're very consistent with what we're seeing other districts do. Reinvesting those reserves back into your, or reinvesting those surpluses back into your reserves. Really to help with that long-term financial plan. That's really what your bond rating agencies look at when they look at school districts. How are you managing those reserves and funding also? As you know, this district does a very good job in that. You do a reserve presentation on a regular basis to talk about the reserves, the purpose, the goals of those point balances and reserves. And, and so again, you do have a very, very good discussion on that. Okay. So, so that's really a brief overview of the 65-page document. Certainly, we also issued a internal control communication. But with any audit, we look at your internal controls or checks and balances, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. That's really where we want to be. Very positive. That's really where you want to be, right? So that's very positive. Few procedural items that we recommend. We've implemented a couple of items that we talked about last year. So very positive. It shows you're reacting to our discussion. So again, really where you want to be. So again, overall, very good financial results. Really demonstrates the decisions that were made early on. And you've seen the results in reinvesting those results into the long-term plan of the schools. Okay?
So I just want to have a reminder, some of the decisions that were made early on was really based on the expectation that we had, oh, no, we're not going to have all this revenue coming in. And some decisions were made to put off spending and not do some of the things you're doing, some of the facilities work that may have been done. We held off with spending that money. But unfortunately, when you do something like that, you have to spend it next year. You have to spend it eventually. And so luckily, we lucked out that the money did come back and we postponed everything. So even though it may look like, hey, we have a lot of money now, you got to go back and spend stuff that we should have spent. So we just have to look at that and appreciate that that was understood. And that helped our bond rating, because bond ratings always help us with the interest that we're paying. So kind of interesting to see all this nagging that Rick does to us. Comes full circle and it really works. Thank you. I kind of think you knew. So, well, thank you. Any questions for Tom? So Leah sat in on the audit committee. And I think they saw her head spin in multiple revolutions there. Just the pile of data. And what happens is so many people in the committee are so familiar with terminology, it's tough to step in. So Leah, did you have anything yet? Head's still spinning?
No.
No, good. So you can teach us all about fund balances and reserves?
Not quite yet, but I'll get there.
Okay, awesome. Any questions for anyone? So Rick, one of the things it has in here that we're approving the corrective action plan. And I just opened the document that was here. I've seen the corrective action plan, but it wasn't on the document in one note for the meeting.
It was the cover letter as part of item 6.6. It's in the cover letter.
I'm sorry, looking at the summary. Under the prior year deficiencies, right?
Right, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was looking at the executive summary. Not the wonderful 73-page document. So the corrective action plan, what were the items on that?
So again, it goes to what Tom was sharing, some of those internal control documents, some of the findings that they've had. So it's just our response to those. So you can
the federal programs.
Yep.
Changes is.
Lunch operations still being in a deficit. And again, I think if you were asked, Tom, it's not that unusual. We actually had less of a loss for that program. So kudos to Gary and his crew. Federal programs, you know, just other items that they want to bring to our attention. This goes back to that Title I policy and the federal funding, Lori, in particular. So we do have a document that we were putting together that will be bringing forward for approval. And then just again, the Gatsby number 87, just as Tom and his firm helps us work through those. We continue to meet the needs of Gatsby. So that was pretty much it.
I'm reset through a long meeting for this brief discussion, but we appreciate that. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the acknowledgement of the external audit and corrective action plan.
Say, second, Kate, all in favor? Thank you. Last, second from last, is meeting evaluation. Mr. Jabardo, you have some comments?
I do. So just two things. One is, I don't like the way these tables are. It's very difficult to be back here to see you guys when you're talking, maybe very personal. So maybe we consider. I know it's always a challenge, my kind of, we could figure out briefly about making it better. Because I'm always doing this all day long. And secondly, you know, I don't know if the masks make talking even worse. It makes it worse. So I don't know the people in the back in here. I know that this is in a different spot now than it was before. And I'm just concerned that maybe too audience can't hear. I know that that trouble on Zoom, which with the mask, you're kind of dead in water. But one, with the speaker system in here, make it bigger, better, faster, that can be moved somewhere to think about. Number one, I'll be answering now. And number two is some people seem to be confused about the process coming to board meetings, right? And whether they do or don't need to sign up or what the process is. And the part of that is some people are looking online, at least seeing it clearly communicated what needs to be done. And maybe while we're doing certain things and we do A because of B and so on. So maybe we could, if we talk about getting something out online and make it very clear while we're doing sign, if there's no sign in and if something happens, we'll do that. So sound acoustics in here and then just some communication or platforms about how people come to board meetings and margins are things.
So Marcia, is there something on the website now about?
If you go to the website and right in the bottom left-hand corner, it says board meeting. It says read here and then explains how you have to make a reservation for privilege of the floor.
For person of the floor, that's attending though.
No.
Right, but some people think they got to sign up to what we discussed, time to attend, which is a little different, but okay.
We did have that policy before.
Yeah, so.
Are we continuing with that policy?
We currently don't have it posted, I believe, is what Lynette told me. It just talks about privilege of the floor. And it explained that this meeting in particular started at seven as opposed to six. That was right there in the front page of the website.
Okay. So I think what we ought to do, because of our restrictions, I think we ought to make it an announcement to let people know that we do have limited space, like we did back in the heat of COVID, not that it's over, but in the heat of COVID, I think we need to reiterate that we are limited to the number of people. Now, open meetings law says we cannot, we have to change our location based on our audience. So if we had more people, we would have to go to another place, whether it's COVID or not. And based on our participation, we do appreciate you guys being here. But we've never had a full crowd. We've never had that issue where the number of tables there, we have, we've had to come people away. So I think we're still in the spirit of open meeting laws, allowing people to come in. And I believe it's still extended. Are we still allowed to do just Zoom meetings? So right now, we're still in a point of emergency orders that says we could, all we're doing is from Zoom and not be in this room. We are choosing to be in this room because we all think it's important to be here and have privilege of the floor. And I think we're going to continue that as long as we possibly can. So if Marcia, if you can dig up what we had in the past and make that more public on our website, appreciate that. Now, the other thing is the sound system. So normally, we don't interact with the audience. But what have you guys, Joe and the ladies behind you, have you been able to hear everything? Or has it been really difficult? Okay. So one of the things about open meeting laws is this is a, a meeting in the public. And it's never, it wasn't intended to be, okay, we're presenting to the audience, but that's what the law says. But that's not the way we feel. We want everyone to hear. So I think we need to do something about a sound system. At one time, we had something where there was microphones around that would share it out into the back of the room. Because the more people that are out there, the even worse it gets for the sound. So I think we need to look at that, especially if we end up in something like the Department Art Center or one of the other buildings where we're on a stage and we have, we really need a sound system. So like spending money for something that isn't student-facing. But I think this is something that we need to look at getting so people can hear what we're doing.
And as I was going to say, I appreciate the feedback. I don't have an answer, obviously, today. But I appreciate knowing even the efforts that we tried aren't producing the results that we had hoped for. Even with this owl system, it was supposed to amplify. It was supposed to give a better experience to people who may be joining us via video conferencing. So we'll work to improve that. I know Cory, I had already reached out. We'll do some research to see what we can do to improve that experience.
Yeah, I was actually going to talk about the L system for a second, because this obviously isn't working to amplify sound there. But I did listen to the recording of the board meeting last time. Was that the first time you could use the L system?
No.
Because the sound on the recording, I don't know how it's playing over Zoom, obviously, at the same time. But on the recording was quite clear, I thought. I don't know if anybody else had a chance to listen to it or.
What I had to do more than my fair share of board meetings remotely since we've come back. And I was kind of trying to reflect on what my experience had been when I'm online. And I just do a regular link. I'm not doing anything special. And I never had a problem with audio.
When you were online?
Online. To recordings too, and I haven't had a problem with that either. But that's not to say I'm the singular.
But the comment that Dave had shared about a community member was more towards being in the audience than to be online. So last year, last weekend, I listened to some of the meetings and it turned out pretty well. But last week, I had moved that up here, so the owl wasn't out here. So so last week, my little lesser quality, because we didn't move the owl. And now that it's out there a little further, it should be even better yet.
I mean, that's a taken dead horse. But I mean, shouldn't it be like over there for the, we can hear each other here, but.
This doesn't do anything, though. That's picking up for Zoom.
So the other thing is, as far as what Dave was saying, was the layout of the room. We've gone through different iterations of what it was. And I guess years ago, it was a more of a shape where some people were sitting here. And I think that would be a better scenario. Unfortunately, whoever's sitting here, they're back to that screen, but we have a screen there. And it's just, sorry for whoever's standing at the podium. We're going to be talking to someone back, but I think we ought to do that. And I, I think that will help round the room out a little bit. And we had opt-in on tables here to make it more of a horseshoe rather than this being. So thank you, this nuts and bolts thing conversation has to happen every.
I mean, if you do one thing, then these can see some here, I mean, some is always to be short-changed. But it's like right now, I'm on, you know.
Oh, me too, dude. So I want to comment that there's probably a container of cheese balls over there for a snack that Mr. Rosselli left behind. So we want to have snacks. We can do that. Okay, any other meeting evaluation comments? Well, Dave, thank you for bringing that up. We appreciate it. And for the folks that are in the audience, if there's comments like that, please share with us. You know how to get ahold of all of us. So we want to make sure it's worthwhile for you to come. Sorry, wish you spoke up sooner. I'll yell. How's that? Perfect. Okay, motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second, Kate, all in favor?
If so, thank you everyone for coming.